I was watching How I Met Your Mother and you're like, "Ring bearer, ring bearer."
February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Ohio County Board of Education meetings. Here by call at six P M. This is where I pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, excuse us, we're on a ramp here, so every so often we just slide away. All right, welcome everybody to the Warner Day.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You all right back there?
Apparently we all got an email at the same time.
Did she put it on silent?
Thank you. All right, let's kick off with Dr. Miller and her superintendent's information, please.
Yes, I'd just like to share some information with the board. As you all know, I'm currently the president of the W B A S A, and we are taking a look closely at the compulsory attendance code eighteen-eight-one. And the way it reads currently is that people that are interested in homeschooling their child, they are required to turn in a notice of intent, a curriculum outline, the person whom is giving the instruction, and their instruction has to be given by someone with a minimum of a high school diploma or GED, the academic assessment in grades three, five, eight, and eleven, and possibility of a portfolio sample reviewed by a certified teacher. We are requesting, in the mindset of keeping all children safe, as this falls under Ohio County Schools currently, to monitor that that takes place. We are requesting that the notice of intent include a phone number. Currently, it does not. The notification of a new resident, so when that child moves to another county or state that we are notified, as well as assessment in all grades K through eleven. Currently, we do not put our eyes on students. Again, we are looking to err on the side of safety, and I want to make sure that all children in the state of West Virginia are safe. Certainly want to thank John McCabe, Derek Redd. I had an interview today with Howard Monroe, as well as Steve Novotny, and of course Jocelyn, who's here with us tonight, for the opportunity to share that information with our community. Also, I'd like to share with the board that we had an opportunity to meet with Project Best. We are looking to how we can incorporate more opportunities for our students using local businesses and opportunities for those kids. This Wednesday is the Textured Hair Expo on Wednesday at five o'clock at Bridge Street Middle School. And certainly want to explain to people that businesses are donating their time and skills to help anyone needing guidance to style textured hair. We have several families that are in foster care, grandparents taking children, and this is just one way to build confidence, self-esteem, and that community effort to help our students. All About Park has been rescheduled for Thursday from five to eight at Wheeling Park High School. We look forward to meeting a lot of new future patriots and showing them all the wonderful things and opportunities at the high school. This Saturday, Ryan Stanton will be holding his Community History of Wheeling Saturday at ten o'clock at Wheeling Park High School. We certainly invite everybody to come on out. We have been hovering around two hundred people per session. Very entertaining, it's just a great atmosphere, a lot of really cool people coming. And finally, we want to congratulate Levi Parker for breaking the school record on his two-hundred freestyle, and Molly George for getting first runner-up in the hundred-meter backstroke. So congratulations to our athletes.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any questions for Dr. Miller on her report? Here we go, we'll move on to moments for omission.
Good. I'm so sorry.
Anne, certainly, I didn't turn the page over, totally my fault. We want to congratulate, want to applaud all the efforts of our school bus drivers. Friday was School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and there was a nice little celebration held at the Operations Center. And certainly want to applaud the work that they do as they pick up the first person to see our kiddos and the last people. So thank you for everything they do, and thank you, Mr. Croft.
All right, great, yeah. I second that, thank you to all of our bus drivers. My kids were in the bus for many years, and so I'm very thankful for the good oversight that they had on their way to and from school. I want to congratulate our speech and debate team, who performed really well this weekend in a big tournament. They had the overall tournament speech stakes, first-place speech stakes, and third-place debate. So congrats to them, they continue to just roll right along, being very successful. I also want to thank Mr. Vic Thomas and all he's doing with our archery program throughout our entire school system. It's a really neat thing that he has really poured himself into, and I think it involves a lot of kids, and they really want it. So I want to thank him for that, and congrats to our Warwick students on making it middle, who competed recently in archery.
Thank you, Molly. Anne?
I'd like to say also that the athletic team and everybody's doing great with our students, and thank you to the teachers and the people that are giving them the care and the watch, and even the chaperones that go down with them downstate. I see the speech team is in New York, and they've done a great job also. And they met with Ms. Chalkus up there, which was a graduate from Wheeling Park High School. And I would also like to say that I've heard some things about the P E I A for the state, and from what I understand, Marshall County has offered their employees a H R C card with money on it to help pay for their deductibles and things like that. And I would like to see a high county maybe delve into looking to see what we could do for our employees. You know, sometimes we're going paycheck to paycheck, and any extra that we could do to help them along with us to benefit from the P E I A increasing would help all the employees of a high county schools. So I hope that we can look into something and maybe come up with an idea to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Andy?
Thank you. Ditto also what Ms. Hertz said, like to see something for our hard-working employees. It may not be that card, or it may not be that particular mode, but hope that we could do something for employees with considering the raising of the P E I A. Couple things, I missed last week's meeting, and Bernie thanked me for not coming because I had the flu, boy was I sick. I want to comment on the Gateway, the robotics tournament, unbelievable. I was so impressed with all those kids. I mean, and the games change from year to year. It's not the same robotic action, it's very different every year, so they have to reprogram them every year. And the way that those kids operate as a unit, it's truly twenty-first century at its finest. And our kids from the Ohio County Schools have represented themselves well, both the middle school and the high school, very proud of them. Also very proud of the hockey team, who are state champs. And Mr. Croft, I got an email today, sir, from, I guess it's, the gentleman works through Ohio Valley Mall, and they're going to recognize the hockey team and, you know, have a check for us. And I got the email because I was president last time that happened, so it was sent in to me. But that's on the seventh of March. If you are unable to attend that, I'd be glad to go in your stead if you already want to.
Why don't you go ahead and just take that for us?
I'd be glad to, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, I got to participate in the Get a Light Program. I worked with Dr. Miller one day at Tridelfia. We went to Warwick the same day. That's a great simulation where kids are given a fictitious salary, and they have the budget, how they're going to pay all their bills. And those kind of simulations are the best learning lessons a kid could have. It really was a great activity for our middle school kids, excited to do that. Also, I got to be a spelling bee judge at Woodsdale and at Warwick. That's always fun. I'm dead of just because I was a terrible speller. So any of these kids could probably blow me away with their spelling skills, but I was very impressed with how well they did. The other day, I heard something, and I'm going to get on my horse here, that really concerned me, that there was approximately sixteen students that are from the state of West Virginia that are attending schools in Ohio, and they're receiving the HOPE Scholarship. And to me, I was shocked by that. And it doesn't necessarily mean they were kids from a high county, but they were kids from West Virginia. Many, many years ago, actually in nineteen-eighty-two, there was a decision called the Judge Rec Decision. I happened to be involved in that because I was very active in the Teachers Association, and we were politically active in regards to legislation and things that were going on. But Judge Rec was a judge here in Ohio County, and he was given the task of looking at the educational system and the way that the educational counties are financed. And what he found was that they were not financed in equitable manner. And they had, he highlighted the Constitution of West Virginia saying, "The state has a responsibility to provide a thorough and effective effective public school system," and that is regards to finances. So when I keep hearing about more things about the HOPE Scholarship, and I know I spoke about this before, I think there are some things that the public needs to understand, that things are going on right now that are in a crescendo. And I learned a long time ago, it's better to be proactive than reactive. So I'm being very proactive here, and I'm telling you, people, we need to have our ears open. There are projections for next year, and I got this data from the West Virginia Center on Budget and Policy. This year alone, Ohio County is losing out on one-point-three million dollars that are going to HOPE Scholarship applicants. In the year two thousand and twenty-six, the projection, and again, this is from the West Virginia Center on Budget Policy, a hundred-and-ten million dollars. And that money comes directly out of the school's operating budget, what the state reimburses us to run the schools. And the killer was, the projection for the year two thousand and twenty-seven was three-hundred million dollars, because more and more people will want to take advantage of that. And I think what's really sad, we're doing this All About Park. Why anybody would not want to go to Wheeling Park amazes me because of the programs that we have. And I understand religious context to that, and I understand the college background, and I understand all that. But we offer quality education in Ohio County, and yet we are losing money to people who want to take advantage of the HOPE Scholarship. Just as an example, we are to provide this thorough and efficient system, okay? What would our system, how would our system improve if we were to throw that a hundred-and-ten million back into our budget? Well, number one, we could give every teacher a three-thousand-dollar raise. We can't get teachers in the state of West Virginia. If we've offered more money, do you think that'd be more enticing for people to come or work in our state? That'd be fifty-one million, we cost us. We could hire an additional one-hundred school psychologists. That's approximately two more per county, and that's the people in the back row there. We could stand a couple more psychologists, couldn't we? To help our kids.
We are glad to have two right now, yes.
Yes, we're lucky to have two.
Yes.
We could hire two-hundred-and-fifty additional social workers. The meeting, the last time I was here, we had the community and schools people, and the work that they do, unbelievable. Imagine having that kind of support in every building, mall. We could hire additional two-hundred-and-fifty school counselors. That would be fifteen million. We could give a two-thousand-dollar raise for our bus drivers. There are counties in the state that can't, don't have enough bus drivers. If we could pay them two-thousand dollars more, again, much more enticing. Also, we could hire two-hundred more special education teachers. Surely it would enjoy adding a few more aces in the hole there to help our kids, our needy kids. It is, I heard this on someplace, that, you know, we have what, eighty-one million-dollar budgets need? What's one million? Come on. What's a million? That's a, that's a lot. That's a lot of metal detectors, counselors, resource officers in our schools. That's a lot. Now, all I'm saying is the two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand students in the state of West Virginia that are in the public schools are being slighted to make sure that the minority of students get what they need and get money to go to private schools or whatever. And the HOPE Scholarship is part of that. All right, here's what I propose. Based on the HOPE Scholarship data and insights from other states, this voucher program is possibly initiative that is negatively impacting the state of West Virginia's public school system, and primarily benefiting a small group of private schools and clientele. To fulfill our constitution obligation for all children in West Virginia to have access to free and adequate system of public schools, thorough and efficient, significant guardrails must be placed on these vouchers instead of the money going out of state, instead of going for things like dancing lessons, Taekwondo lessons. Public funds should be directed to public schools for the betterment of the entire student population and community overall. And our public schools educate and serve every eligible student in our community who wishes to enroll. And by the way, if the, if a HOPE, a HOPE Scholarship student goes to another location, uses that HOPE Scholarship money, which is around four-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, and things aren't working out, and they decide to come back to the schools after October first, guess what? They'll give the money back. There's no guardrails to that. The legislature should require all private schools, microschools, charter schools to accept the HOPE Scholarship, to administer the state test once a year, and publish their results on the West Virginia Checkful website, just as public schools do. Where's the accountability for them? The West Virginia legislature should implement stronger regulations and accountability measures around the HOPE Scholarship, including cost and enrollment tax, a limited application period, limitations on household income for those who participate to avoid subsidizing wealthier families who could already afford private school. The board was given a little pamphlet today. On there, there's some more things that are kind of interesting, I won't delve into them, except to say that I'm not sure that the HOPE Scholarship is doing exactly what it was intended to do. I think it is making things much more difficult for public schools to operate, and it's negatively affecting the majority of our students. And I apologize to my fellow board members for my long-lived narrative, but I felt that it was necessary that I shine light on this in a public way.
Bernie?
Obviously want to recognize the bus drivers as well. I bussed my whole career in Ohio County, so it's really great to see them being recognized. And then I just had Levi breaking the two-hundred-three school record. You know, being a swim team alumnus, I was always striving for a school record in nineteen-eighty-three. I learned a whole lot of years the school was in existence. I never made the school record, so that's quite the opposite. Here in twenty-twenty-five, congratulations to him. And, you know, bowling, hockey, archery, just so many things going on. So it's just a great thing, and of course the speech team, they're doing jinxing, but just they're amazing, so that's all I have, Mr. Croft.
Thank you, Bernie. Just a couple of things. One is, sometimes not great results on our bids for our local contractors can turn into opportunities. Last week, this board followed the law, which is West Virginia Code five-twenty-two-one, and awarded a roofing contract to a company that is from North Carolina. And Nathan Butts from Project Best asked to meet with us to go through that. And we walked through the steps of what the rules are and what we were mandated to follow, and he was very understanding of that. Sean Doyle from McKinley was there, as well as Dr. Miller, Mr. Jones, and Steve. What came out of that was an interesting opportunity. As we, as we kicked things around, is the ability of this board to adopt a policy that provides some preference to local vendors, up to five percent. And there's a West Virginia Code Section five-eight, S three, S thirty-seven. So I'm going to put that for our agenda on our next meeting. The meeting that we had with them was Friday, so I couldn't get it on this agenda. I've already drafted a policy. Now, that policy's only up to five percent, and it wouldn't have come into play on this last set of bids. But what came out of that is, when there's a concern of how our public dollars are being spent, and we sit down and talk about it, maybe it doesn't unring the bell of the rules we had to follow, but it's going to open up some opportunities down the road. So it was a positive, good conversation. I appreciate Nathan getting up early Friday and meeting with us, and Sean also coming down with us. With respect to the P E I A, and, you know, we have had some internal discussions on that. Couple of things, the reason we haven't had this as an agenda item, is one is I want to give the state of West Virginia the right to go back on its promise to not raise P E I A. And if we, another county's all fall in line, and there's no incentive for the state to fulfill that promise, and if they, if we can get the state to fulfill its promise, we're not going to prejudice all the retirees. Because if we give the additional dollars now, you're not going to get it. Andy's not going to get it, but you're still relying on P E I A. I think our first obligation is try to push the state to fulfill its promise. But, and again, as Andy had mentioned, the HOPE Scholarship's taken one-point-three. We don't know what the federal impact is going to be on us on funding. So we will do all that we can, and it'll come to our board when those premiums are increased, to do what we can to help our folks. But I don't want to let the state off the hook on fulfilling its obligations in the year that it said, "Look, P E I A will not go up on our watch." Their watch's still ticking, and they ought not increase those benefits. So that was all that I had. Moving on to item four on the agenda, personnel.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate and recognize Paige Butler from a bachelor's plus fifteen to a master's, Riley Dixon from a bachelor's to a master's, and Dawn Hay from a bachelor's to a bachelor's plus fifteen, and all other personnel as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any questions about the personal, personnel agenda? Here are none. May I have a motion to accept the personnel as recommendations as recommended by Dr. Miller? I have the first.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please sign the form, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five, reports, follow-up actions, school safety, Mr. Jones.
Yes, so we have one more officer that, retiree, that has accepted a position, so we're hoping he, I think he will be starting first week of March. So that would leave us with needing two more, and we would have every school with a full-time resource officer, so that's good news.
It's exciting.
Where would the new person go?
We're still deciding that. Elm Grove, most likely.
Do we have, do we have one or two at Park right now?
Two. And then, so all that's left is, if this person goes to Elm Grove, it'd be, one person is sharing West Liberty in Bethlehem, and Tridelfia is sharing with Steam Rod, most of the time spent at Tridelfia, but he does, is responsible for Steam Rod as well. So if we get those two filled, we'll be in good shape. And it should happen, I'm sure, before next year, because we're starting to get more applicants for these jobs. And then, as you know, Jocelyn covered it very well. Our metal detectors are in use at the, in the very beta stage to try to be quick with them and not hold up everybody. So we're working on those, but the first day did go very well, and was interesting to watch. And lastly, just before these guys talk, has nothing to do with school safety, but I wanted to mention we had our superintendent's forum. Mr. Bayes did an outstanding job expressing his, some of the things that he'd like to see improved, and we are working on this thing, so we're looking forward to hearing them talk when we get up here, so thanks for coming.
Did you tell Starbucks was out of questions for the capture?
No, because it's not, or I'm still looking at it.
All right, five dot two, W P H S, Future Farmers of America.
That was like a big sigh.
Do you guys want to use, want to use a microphone over there, so they can hear you?
My chair does not need a microphone.
Thank you.
It's on. That works.
All right, well, first off, thank you for allowing me to come speak to you guys. We are one of the newest C T E programs at Wheeling Park High School, started just four years ago by Ms. Devon Fox. And then after that first year, I was hired to take over as the ag teacher in Bloomfield. So to start out here, I just kind of want to give an update or kind of explain what ag education is, because it's often a misunderstood program. It's often described as just farming and plants, just animals, growing things for the greenhouse, that sort of thing. But we actually follow this three-circle model. To start off with, we use the classroom instruction. Obviously, we have six different courses right now that we teach at the high school with various pathways to become a completed status through C T E. And then we also have an outside-of-the-classroom program called the Supervised Agricultural Experience. That is a program where kids have to do two years' worth of a project outside of the classroom. It can still be at the school, but it is outside of the educator, the classroom and lab setting formally. And then the last thing is the F F A, which is an intracurricular student organization, which makes it different than all other student organizations. It's not extracurricular. We actually teach F F A and the values of F F A in the class, as dictated by the state and national F F A. So it is part of my C S Os and everything like that, that I encourage students to be actively involved in that, in that chapter. So we'll look at these three aspects a little bit. Right now, we have, I'd like to kind of announce that we do, that I have a new endorsement code. I was limited in what I could teach before to the ag business pathway. But now I am able to teach any and all ag classes throughout the state, or throughout the curriculum, which is a huge advantage, which kind of puts me as an alternatively-certified ag teacher, meaning that I didn't go to school to be an ag teacher, on the same level ground as student, or as teachers that did go to school to be an ag teacher. So now we are able to teach everything from animal systems all the way up to ag mechanics, if we so choose to. It's not really my strong point, but it is an interesting class or pathway. Ag education actually has nine different pathways within it, so unlike, say, welding, where it's just welding, one, two, three, four. We have three different pathways currently that we're going to work on. The ag business pathway, brand-new animal systems pathway that I'm going to start this coming fall, and then the plant systems pathway, which has been in place since the program started. So we have six different courses, too. Our intro to ag, which is a curriculum that is set up by a company called Case, which is the curriculum. which is the Curriculum for Agricultural Science Education. They are a national curriculum developer that is a partner with national F F A. So it is a course that is seen and accepted by the state. So you'll see those different CASE designations on some of these courses. Makes it a lot easier for me, since I don't really have a background in lesson planning and all of that kind of teaching background. This comes as basically as a ready-to-go course, has all of the activities and everything that you would wanna do set up for me. And as long as I can facilitate those, these kids can do some hands-on stuff. And it's very heavily science-based, which is good. So hands-on is the best way to learn it in my experience. So we have that Intro to Ag, we have Science of Ag, which is a second-year course, Horticulture, Animal Science, which is gonna be the new course that we offer, Animal and Plant Biotechnology. We did offer Ag Biotechnology this year, but this is just the CASE version of that, which is a lot more hands-on, and covers a very broad area. And then finally, just Greenhouse Production and Management, which we have had for several years. It's just now formally becoming an actual class part of the ag program since it was started.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
So those are all one-credit courses. How do you have those set up?
Yep, so Horticulture and Greenhouse, right now we're set up as block classes, one per semester, just so that they can mirror each other, and that we have enough students and time to get the greenhouse stuff going.
That was my next question. How's the clientele? Are you getting a good amount of kids who want to be a part of it?
Yes. So I would say we've been a little stagnant, I guess, since my first year. I think we had an influx of students in those first two years. They're a little stagnant in terms of enrollment, but hopefully with this new animal pathway, we should be able to kind of branch out a little bit more and get some more students in there as well. So this is our Supervised Agricultural Experience. So you can do this, you have to do it for two years, like I had mentioned earlier. So it looks as the Agriculture Experience Program on transcripts, but it can be done in five different areas. So this is something that these students get to learn outside of the classroom. It can either be under entrepreneurship, placement, or internship, such as kind of a job anywhere, service learning, school-based, or the research aspect. And some of the examples that we have up here are some of our kids that are doing those supervised ag experiences. We have one of our students who is a manager at Crumble Cookie. And then we have another member that works on his family farm. He took his tractor to a tractor pool at West Alexander Fair. We have Jacob working with us at the farmer's market, selling some of our leftover flowers and our eggs. And then we have one of our freshmen here, Bodie Cox, showing some livestock at the fair this year. So all of those are pretty much gonna be in our first two, entrepreneurship and placement slash internship. And then Jacob could actually fall under school-based or service learning. Either one would work for that, because we didn't pay him.
You're gonna have to connect Crumble Cookie for me.
So she actually started out, so one of the pathways is food science and agriculture. I don't actually teach that one, because I don't wanna compete with, this is all very her ProStar program. She obviously could do a lot better than I. So Trenton here is actually one of the managers there, so she does a lot of baking, a lot of the prep work. So we can count that as an S A E. And then, so the next thing is simulated workplace, obviously, all the C T E programs at Park Ave. Ours is called Parkview Farms. We switched it from the Patriot Plant Palace, which was our first iteration of that. We switched it just so it could encompass more than just the greenhouse. Ag is super, super broad. It covers a lot of different things. As I mentioned about that CASE program, they have actually started a CASE robotics course. They're coming out this summer, because of a lot of labor issues in the ag field. So we're looking at robots to help us do that, to help us with that labor shortage. So we're seeing a lot of that in that aspect as well. So we have our chickens that we have up at the school. There's twenty-two of them. So we actually entered our eggs in the competition up at OpenmeFest, and our green eggs got second place out of, I think there were about six or seven dozen eggs there. And then obviously, our greenhouse, which everybody knows is very successful in the month of May.
Dan?
Oh, boy.
Actually, there was one little thing on that first slide, or not the first slide, but on the simulated workplace slide. Up in that corner was a West Virginia grown emblem. So that logo right there is a program started by the West Virginia Department of Agriculture. And we are the first, and to my knowledge, the only school that is part of that program, which basically just means that we grow and market our own West Virginia grown products. So we have that designation on our eggs that we sell, and we are gonna start using it more so with our greenhouse here in the spring as well. So a lot of times, those plants come from different places, not from West Virginia. So that's that one. And then this is kind of our F F A slide. I'm gonna let Jacob talk a little bit more about that, but as I said, it is intracurricular. So I took the job kind of to offer a whole lot of opportunities to these kids that may not be available to them otherwise. And I think that what he has to say will kind of prove that we're kind of getting to that point. So I will let Jacob talk, and I will let Trenton hand out to the board members a list of all of the activities that we have done so far this year, and some of those stuff that we have upcoming as well.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for letting us be here as a part of your being. My name is Jacob Bays, a senior at Wheeling Park High School and the president of the Wheeling Park F F A. In case you don't know, F F A is a national organization of over one million members, aimed at developing leadership in its youth and advancing American agriculture. It's something I hold very close to my heart. Throughout my high school years, the chapter has had a fair amount of success in the world of F F A and agriculture. We've done well at various competitions, having the first and second individual at the West Virginia F F A Agriculture Mechanics with a fifth-place team out of twenty-two other teams from across the state. On top of that, we've also had the fourth-place Individual Livestock Evaluation Competition. And most recently, we've had several top finishers at the Northwest Regional F F A L D E Speech Competitions, securing two spots for our competition at State Convention in the summer. In addition to all that, the Wheeling Park F F A Dairy Judging Team, consisting of myself and other members, has won the state dairy competition at the state level, allowing us to represent West Virginia F F A at the National F F A Convention this October. The same team has taken a trip to judge cattle at the North American International Livestock Expo in Louisville, Kentucky, where we were recognized for our success in various different breeds of dairy cattle. Outside of F F A, plenty of opportunities are available. All students, like Mr. Bloomfield said, are required to have supervised agricultural experience. My S A E story is that I've been raising livestock for the West Alexander Fair for the past couple of years. I've put in countless hours to get my animals ready for show, even managing to win reserve champion senior showmanship at the fair this last year. On top of that, I've shown sheep across the state of West Virginia in places like Brewston Mill and Point Pleasant. And I've done all that from probably the last place you think of when you heard the word livestock, the North Park area. Tonight, I'm here to tell you about the opportunity Wheeling Park F F A and the Agriculture C T E Program has given not just me, but all of our members. F F A has given us the chance to grow, the chance to learn, and the chance to drive our career paths into a direction that we are passionate about. However, many people don't even know we exist. Many people don't know what we do or what we're about. And to see even one kid like me turn his shoulder from the ag program and F F A, not knowing the opportunity it yields, hurts me deeply. We recognize that a connection with our school board is important for the development of our chapter. So we come for you all today to tell you what we do, what we are, and what we will continue to do. Thank you very much.
I have a question as well. You're a board member. I just wanted you to share your plans that you shared with us and the superintendent, because it was pretty amazing, I thought, for the future.
Okay. So after high school, I'm going to W B U to study animal science. And from there, I have a couple of options that I'm looking into, one of them being a large animal veterinarian to look at livestock and help out the county and the area, since we only have one. Also, I'm really interested in the reproductive systems and livestock, especially cattle, and I'd love to get into the artificial insemination technician side of things. But there's a lot of different options that I'm very passionate about, and F F A has kind of helped me to hone my knowledge, my prior knowledge and what I've learned into something that I wanna do.
Awesome. Well, I'll tell you, I will personally, when I say me personally, I mean Ms. Butine. Will start to do some more stories and get some more words out about the program.
Thank you very much.
I'm impressed. I just wanted, do you guys ever been able to like hydroponics? I mean, or is it just straight agriculture in the ground?
We actually have a hydroponics machine.
Okay.
Cool. It's pretty cool stuff.
It is, yeah. Very cool. I think this is great. So thank you for sharing. It's good to know.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to add, if I may, one of the things that you've proven thus, young man, is that I think that when you put your mind to something, I think you're gonna get it done. But if there's any way that anybody here can assist you in any manner, please let us know.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure your teacher would be glad to write some recommendations for you or whatever. But congratulations to both of you. This is, this is the first time I've heard of this in detail. I've heard of it, but I've never heard it in detail like this. Thank you so much for educating us.
Thanks for having us. Do you have sheep in North Park?
Yeah, so funny story, I called the city, and I guess we were far enough out. Like, yeah, you got a fence, throw a couple sheep in. I've always taken a steer, but obviously can't have, can't have a cow in North Park. I had to keep that at a buddy's house one year, but I'm moving on to sheep. I like sheep a lot better. I think they're funnier.
One way to perpetuate this is you've got incredible enthusiasm. It's much appreciated across on this side. Stay involved with Wheeling Park and High County Schools, because that, that's what gets it rolling is that kind of enthusiasm is contagious. And so I can thank you enough for sharing that with us. And as Andy said earlier, this board will be behind you one hundred percent. So if we can do some things to help you guys along your way, please let us know.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, this is fantastic. Thank you for a lot. Before everyone class, can I ask a couple questions? We didn't make our way all the way down yet. How many students do you have that are involved right now currently at Wheeling Park?
I believe there are about sixty total.
Okay. Okay. Just throughout the, all the different pathways?
Yeah, I would say that not all of them are active in F F A, but there's probably about a third of that active in F F A, so.
Okay, all right. So you can be part of one of the pathways with the ag program at Wheeling Park without being part of the F F A side of it?
Currently, the national F F A has decided that every student, starting twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, that all students in an ag class will be members of F F A.
Okay.
But that three-circle model that I showed, those circles aren't necessarily always gonna be the same size. So we might have a kid that is in F F A but isn't necessarily active, doesn't have, they don't have to really do a whole lot for that.
Well, thank you guys for coming and presenting, and like everyone has said, we're happy to support you, and I love to hear about all of the student successes that we have coming out of Wheeling Park High School, with all of the variety of options that our students have. It's really awesome. So thank you for taking your time to come.
I've been up at Park in the greenhouse when Mr. Bloomfield's brought a calf for, mostly the calves up. And didn't he take them around to one of the schools?
Yep, we were at Wednesday last year.
Yeah, so they went, and he brings up his trailer and brought a calf up to the school for the students. And I think that's great that they can see. So I think the program, this is what we need. This is what the valley is all about, is agriculture and things like that. We need involvement. So thank you.
All right, guys. Appreciate you educating. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Great job.
Good job.
I want, I want a sheep.
That's a great baby.
The neighborhood plays chickens. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody wanna pull some things off of that?
Uh, yeah.
All right, paid bills?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Um, the six-point-three auditor preference resolution, and then six-point-two, the homecoming parade.
All right, so we are pulling on six dot two, six dot three, and six dot four. Homecoming Parade and Pepper Rally. Would you like to kick us off?
Sure. I just noticed that in the agenda, that the decision was made to move it back downtown. So I want to thank everyone who looked at that and decided to reevaluate it and move it downtown. And I think that that's a great decision, and I think it'll be a really good thing for the parade and for our students and our community, and let everyone, let people in the community have a better chance of being involved and being part of the parade. It's, it'll be a much, it's a neat experience for the students to be able to ride on their clothes around downtown and be celebrated by the community. So thank you to everyone who took a look at that, and I'm glad that we made this decision was made.
Well, thanks for raising that last week. It kind of got by most of us.
Thanks for coming, guys.
So long, guys. I'd say we're only here for another round. Auditor preference resolution.
Yeah, I messed that one. Just, Stephen, do you want to just explain that really briefly?
Sure. Every three years, we, our auditor to debate, we have a choice. We're either the state auditor or an independent outside auditor. It's up to the board. The auditors, we just gonna do the field work for their, their contract, which is the final judgment for fiscal year twenty-four. They were just in last week. This resolution is to go to the state auditor to just say that our board has elected to put our audit out to debate.
Thank you.
Since we're on a roll, you want to pick us off of paid bills as well?
Sure. Let's see. So I noticed that we have written a new special needs bus, check two-two-two eight-five-eight. How long did it take for us, from the time that was ordered, till we were able to receive it?
Yeah, in two years.
Okay, so we're still on that long wait time.
We have the next five still to come in for regular, normal special days to come in, the first prior year.
Okay. The check two-two-two eight-six-seven service personnel workshop. What's that entail? Anyone knows?
I think that was with the speaker.
Oh, I could probably give you some more information. Hold on, two-two-two eight-six-seven. Yeah, so that would be, it says to staff develop associates, two thousand six hundred dollars service personnel workshop?
It was a staff development. It was a, it was a speaker's fee, but paid by staff development funds. That's the service personnel funds that they have control over, to decide how to use their, their staff development.
Okay, so they use their money to bring in a speaker?
Part of it, yes.
Okay, what, what did the speaker speak about?
Working with difficult people.
Okay. We can all use, we can all use that number.
That's gonna sing.
Sounds very useful.
It was, it was actually really good. He did like a keynote, and then he had some pop-out sessions in the afternoon, so it was, it was a nice event. It was actually really good, he did like a keynote and then a bunch of us had some pop-out sessions in the afternoon, so it was, it was a nice event.
Okay, good, good, I'm glad to hear it.
Actually, Molly, Ms. Hercules and I attended a session of the West Virginia School Board Association on the very same topic.
Oh, okay.
But we also.
Alright, well, we all get along great. Right before that, I saw the shirts more $900 for OCS to bog in service personnel PL Day. Is that for them to wear on the job, or is that more of a just like motivator?
Certainly, certainly on the job, but I think both of those categories could have been checked. And again, that was used with service personnel.
Oh, they bought that with their own? Oh, that's great, good. Okay, and the last one I have, check 222-924, Siemens Boiler Repair TMS. Is that something that, is that a cost that was covered under our service contract with Siemens? It was $2,988.
Those were for the missing pieces that were needed. So the steam boiler that we have at the High County Learning Center, try to help get a little school annex, had some problems with it. And what they were able to do was take the prior steam boiler that we just decommissioned at Warwick Elementary School, apart and use the pieces from that to be able to be used over at the Learning Center, so that we didn't have to miss any time and kept the cost to very minimal. Only the additional pieces that were needed to fix that.
Okay, so not covered under the service contract that we have with Siemens because it was outside the scope?
Yeah.
Alright, those are my only questions, thank you.
I want to follow up on the Siemens. We should be coming up not too long with renewing some of the Siemens agreements. And David, are you working on pulling some things together relating to repairs and maintenance and things along those lines? Perhaps as the board, we could have a work session to really grind through those so that we thoroughly, Bernie's had questions on those things since he joined the board. And the nice thing, Bernie's got significant experience in working in big buildings and those types of contracts. So when do you think you would have that information pulled together, David?
Well, I mean, probably the next couple of weeks, we could have a meeting. Siemens has been working and putting together the contracts that you can ask what questions in the work session atmosphere like that. I think that would give us more time than five or 10 minutes at a board meeting trying to answer. And then any additional questions you might have that they might not have available at that time, they could then go and give those answers and come back at a board meeting for a five attendant session and answer some of those questions, so.
So you would expect the Siemens representatives to participate in this work session?
Yeah, they would definitely be there.
Okay, so.
So I had said to email, probably maybe September, I don't know, asking a variety of questions about our Siemens contracts and how they, what's covered, what's not covered. So that's, is that something we could talk about as well at this work session? All of those items would be on there, okay.
So could you sync with Dr. Miller and put out some dates? And, you know, a couple of weeks out from now that we could hold that board members would make the most sense of when to have that meeting?
Okay, is your preference a morning or afternoon, evening?
Or before meeting, or a?
I, well, I mean, what works best for me is an evening meeting, but I'll defer to the rest of the board.
That's better for me, morning, it's not great, since it's really early.
Must be started 5:00 AM. Guys, what do you have on that end? Hungry Tiger number.
I'd rather that start at 5:00 AM.
So.
Really?
And have a preference you like evening?
No, it doesn't matter.
So could we just do an evening, like from 6:00 to whenever, or even 5:00, since those guys are traveling and have to drive back to Pittsburgh? Start at 5:00 and go till 6:00 or 7:00, however long it takes us to grind through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you propose maybe a couple of evenings, just?
Yeah.
Give us a couple of options? Okay, thank you.
Andy, do you have any questions on the paid bills?
I started it up.
Mr. Albertini?
222-820, CMTA, 27,338, phase 1 through 3.
Yeah, so when we did our giant on work, we had three phases of an energy savings loan that we went through. The biggest was the new HESD in Palm Grove, in the park. So part of the energy savings loan with CMTA is that they have to do a study for us every year. They have to pay for that study. So they do a study for each one for the energy savings loan, this is, put in that study.
And then, uh... Yeah, 222-843, interest instruction, 2,756, anyone do digital transcription service?
Yeah, so the high school has a service that they can have transcripts in the central office. We can send them in a digital format.
Okay. And I got the 222-867. 222-927, the vertical transport consulting for elevator inspections. Does that not roll into our maintenance agreement, the annual inspections, because it should be?
That's the company we have to use to do the inspection. They do the inspection through the state and then the company that it's with. So like the Otis Elevator, people go with vertical transport to do that. And that's what the state uses to get their information. Anything that's not the way it needs to be, then we have to make adjustments to that.
So Otis can't do their own inspection?
Correct. So Otis doesn't do that, or TK Elevators doesn't do that.
Got you, okay, that's interesting, thank you. That makes sense. Just a couple of other names, Steve. Check 222-817, the City of Wheeling for the Prevention Resource Officers for 63,706. That's just January?
Correct, we're adding more, the more we add, the good looks.
So how many resource officers would that include? Because that's independent of the folks that work for us as employees, correct? We're running through all the ones that brings on through the police department?
Correct.
Okay, that?
They're not with us.
So they're not technically Ohio County Schools employees?
City of Wheeling.
City of Wheeling, and that's how the resource, okay.
And that's roughly the same amount that December was. And it only went up slightly from November, October, and September. So it's pretty well in line.
Thank you, I just wanted to, I was confused on whether we hired them or whether they are. And then, check 222-885, Albert's Tree Service. I just want to know, we didn't cut in more open trees?
No, these were around the operations center, the ones that was not offensive.
That's all.
They haven't been dropping on our buses?
Alright, I have no other questions. There is no other questions. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda, item 6.1 through 6.5. I got the first, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion during that, others in favor, please say a aye. We had somebody scheduled for a delegation, but I'm by the process of elimination, they are not here. Board member comments, Molly?
Nope, I don't have anything, thank you.
Yeah?
I have nothing, thank you.
Andy?
Nothing, thank you, sir.
Bernie?
I just want to thank you for meeting with Project Best folks. I have several phone calls about that as well. I'm glad that you were able to explain to them that it was a legal issue for us to have to select the lowest fault by there. So thank you for doing that.
I have to follow on up on the comments, I'm glad to do it. And Steve was there because he said, you know, I think there is a way to do it, because it's not under the Board of Ed rules, it's under a different section of the code. And so I'm glad, and I think everybody, every board member here appreciates that if we can have locals do the work, we're always going to do that. Because those are the folks paying the taxes that pay for our schools. So, alright, so moving on to future meetings, Monday, March 10th, 2025, public hearing meetings. The 2025-2026 calendar, 5:30 PM here at the board office. Followed by Monday, March 10th, 2025, a regular meeting at 6:00 PM here at the board office. Monday, March 24th, 2025, the second public hearing meeting for the 2025-2026 calendar at 5:45 at the board office. Followed by Monday, March 24th, 2025, regular meeting, 6:00 PM at the board office. There being no further business before the board, this meeting is hereby adjourned at...